Good morning, and I'd like to reopen the meeting of October 21st.
Okay, yes, Mayor, so we left off last night on item number 11, I believe, within general business for those that are trying to pick up where we are exactly. So item number 11 is an amendment to the Catalina Transportation Services Agreement. Catalina Transportation provides the dial-a-ride, the taxi, and the rap with art, right?
ACT.
ACT, excuse me, ACT. I get all the acronyms incorrect every single time. We have been in the process of renegotiating the agreement with Catalina Transportation Services for some time. There's a number of components of the agreement that we would like to modify. However, recently was brought to our attention that in order to continue to remain eligible for the subsidies that allow for the program and that we provide to offer services to the community, that we in fact need to have a valid and active agreement on file, which we currently do not. So this morning, we are bringing to you a proposal to amend the contract such that it would be active so that we could continue to not have the potential for losing subsidy funds and satisfy audit requirements. Audra is here to explain anything if I've missed anything on this. I know, of course, Connie graciously agreed to come back from last night to be here today again. So with that, please let me know if you have any questions.
Counsel, discussion, or public comment?
Not a lot of comments.
Okay, discussion? Yes, Mayor Protem, Olson.
You remembered. Staff so graciously gave us a serious amount of history going back to 2002 when this first agreement started. And being the person who likes to mess with figures, you take the original contract number from 2002 and you gross it up by CPI, the contract should be like 290, not 350, in my humble opinion. Now, I don't want to recognize that we've been negotiating this for a significant amount of time. I would propose that we take the 290 for the last eight months of the contract and have that be the amount that we contribute to the programs, which would make it, instead of being 2,900 a month, or 29,000 a month, it would be...
Hey, Audra, let the Mayor Protem finish his comment, please. Thank you.
It'd be 21, 587 a month for the next eight months. And I think that this, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, but I think that something growing more than 20% over inflation, I think we were remiss in the past and we should have cut that, leaving the Royal City.
Right, and I know that the past contribution rates have, were simply items that were negotiated by prior management administrations, and they weren't based upon an index, and it was something that fluctuated with the amount of subsidy provided. There was a correlation to the amount provided to Catalina Transportation. And this is prior to my being here and prior to most of you being here as well.
So true.
And Connie?
Connie, Catalina Transportation Services. Well, I understand what you're saying, but if you actually look at our past figures that we've submitted to counsel or that we've submitted to the city managers in the past, that is our actual costs. We've done this year after year after year, and actually, if you notice, the trend went up and then it went down. That's, that really truly is the cost. There's very little room to go back and forth on. We at times take a loss, at times we make a very, very tiny profit. I'm more than happy to show your numbers, but the whole reason of today is that if we don't actually at least just extend the existing contract that we have, we're going to lose the funds that we actually currently receive, and there's going to be no public transportation whatsoever, and there'll be nothing for us to discuss.
I'm not suggesting we don't extend the contract, I'm suggesting we just change the terms of the contract.
Well, I understand that. I know exactly what you're suggesting. I just don't agree with that. I mean, I think that to decide to change the terms of the financial support of what this contract currently serves, and just to decide that today without really looking at everything, which is what we've been doing when we've been negotiating with Ben and the past city managers, that would not be quite right. Because nobody else here has actually had a chance to sit there and look down at those figures and to understand those figures. So to sit there and say that just because this is something you're pulling out of your hat, this is what you feel would be fair, I don't think that that would be fair. Because I know what the numbers look like. I deal with them every day, I do monthly reports all the time, and I'm more than happy to share those with any one of you. My concern would be that you'd be pulling that down, and we therefore would not be able to afford to serve the community the way that we are today. Because the subsidy would run out, I guarantee you. Our ridership has increased. Also, keep in mind, every month, it goes up and up and up. Thank you.
So, and you keep the ticket, and you keep the fare boxes every month. You get the fare box, so every time it goes up and up and up, then you're making more money.
Well, but the fare box for the tickets is $2 a ticket or $1.50 a ticket. And in order to run the program, I mean, we've had to hire two additional girls in the office because of the paperwork that it requires. There's countless hours that I work on this, these programs myself, or that Sue in our office works on these programs herself. We, and we don't even add those into the costs that we've actually given to you over the last few negotiations. So there are an enormous amount of costs incurred when you run public transportation. There's training involved, I mean extensive training. I go, I go out of the state to get training, I have to send other people to go out of the state to get training, and then I have to give all my drivers training. There's so many different factors to take into consideration when you run public transportation. The only reason that we can do it for less than a lot of people over town is because we currently run a taxi company. So therefore, we can incorporate everything within our company that's currently existing. If you just have that program run from just an outside source, it would cost you more than it actually currently costs you.
I have a question of Audra. And I'm sorry, I didn't know we were going to be getting into this as much as we are. But do you, can you, do you know now, do you have an average of what our reimbursement is to Catalina Transportation for the taxi vouchers?
So we give them $352,692 a year.
I mean, per ride, what our reimbursement is per ride?
It fluctuates based on your ridership. So at one point, the ridership had dropped dramatically, and the subsidy per ride was hovering about 25, and the average trip length's about a mile.
Okay, and that, you're saying that, how many months back do you think that was?
Well, I think that was in, well, in 2013, the ridership was really low. You can kind of correlate the ridership with the fare box on that spreadsheet. So that kind of directly relates, 2013 was pretty, was pretty low. I mean, that was a substantial drop from, well, actually, there was two other years in here, but I only showed you the contracts because I have the data for all the years. So it actually even got lower than that. It was pretty low. So when we started renegotiating the contract with them, one of the things that was brought to their attention is that there was no correlation between what we paid them every month and what the ridership was. So there was no incentive for them to increase their ridership. So, and they've done a really good job of that. I do have to commend them on increasing their ridership. I would have to run the numbers right now, but I would still say it's probably $20, $18 to $20 a ride is what the city subsidizes for that trip, per person, not per taxi.
Right.
So, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I actually disagree with that. Because you're also not taking into consideration the additional costs like I've stated. So if you take the total sum, and then you just put that per ride, that, then, I mean, I don't know, I haven't run the figures, but maybe that's close to what it would be. But you also have to take into consideration the actual costs that we incur because of the program, that we would not incur. And you have to subtract those costs from that total. That's what I've been trying to get across to people, that you have to take the total, subtract what our actual costs are, then that's when you go through. And currently, what we're negotiating, just so the council knows, is to pay on a per-ticket price. So per ticket sold, the same way that you do with the Catalina Express. And I think we've pretty much come up with a number that we all agreed upon to pay per ticket. There's just some little details here and there that we're trying to regulate. And I think also, it has to do with the fact that we're still waiting for the new buses to come in, which has to do with ACT. And so we have to renegotiate all of that, because we don't know how that's going to be determined in. So the entire contract is going to end up changing. And the way that you pay us will change as well. So you'll be able to see that you'll be paying us on a per-ticket price, because that's what we were told in the past that makes the council more comfortable. It still comes out to about the same. I've run the numbers over and over and over, and it still comes out to about the same, once you take out our actual costs that we incur because of the program. Because if we didn't run the programs, I would have fewer people in my office, I would run the company very, very differently. And we would still do just fine.
Well, let me ask, do you have more vehicles on the road because of dial-a-ride and art than if you were just running a cab service?
Yes, definitely. Definitely. Our art and dial-a-ride program, currently it takes, it fluctuates from month to month. In the winter months, it's more. Sometimes the months are about 35 or 37% of our ridership are the art and dial-a-ride customers. Sometimes it's about 27%. It varies. Sometimes it goes almost to 50%. So, yes, definitely, if we did not run this program, we would probably have half the vehicles on the road during the wintertime than we have now. And it costs us a lot to have those vehicles on the road.
Does it cost you the same amount of money to run a cab? Let's say if you had two separate vehicles, one for the city programs and one for yours. Is the cost of operation of that cab the same as it is for this cab? You have two cabs. Let's say you're running one just with taxi people, and then you've got another one you're running dial-a-ride and art, okay? Is the cost of running both of those cabs the same?
Yes, because we still have to pay our drivers, I still have to pay for all my insurance. I mean, it's the same, yeah. So basically, what we would do is we would reduce our vehicles and our employees. And reducing all of that takes, takes everything right off the top for your costs.
I guess, again, kind of what I'm getting to, assuming those costs are equal, pretty much. So you get two dial-a-ride tickets on there, and you get $40 for two people to get in that cab to go to the mall. You pick up two people from a hotel and take them to that same place, and it's probably costing $12 or $13.
Yeah, but see, we don't get $40. See, that's, I mean, I know the number that she just gave you, but I disagree with that number. We don't actually get $40 for that ride. Because like I said, we, the amount of paperwork, the amount of things that we have to do because of the programs, costs money. If, and so you have to subtract those costs from it. So it's not that that we get for that ride. And sometimes we lose money on a ride. I mean, because a lot of times, one person just takes the cab. And that ticket actually costs them $2 or $1.50 to take that taxi.
Right.
And that's the actual cost of the fare. So it's different than the Catalina Express. It's, you can't quite figure it the same because of the type of company that we are and because of how we run this. And I mean, and we've actually been commended, every time I go to functions, you know, for transportation and taxi companies and other people that do this, commended on the way we do it because we give such excellent service. So please keep that in mind. Because this would take away from the service if you guys decided to all of a sudden take away the money. I don't even know that I could actually run the program the way that I do. We would have to change all the rules.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Audra, did you have something you want to say?
I don't agree that the cost of the fare is $1.50 or $2, because that's not what they're getting reimbursed. So I disagree with that comment. And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, all righty. Well, as you know, what a lot of us are doing, it's, we're very interested in the transportation service, and we'll all be looking at it too as we move forward, so.
I don't think this is actually new, because in September of 2012, the motion was that we wanted to extend the contract, and then what we wanted to get a total review of the contract before we do the next one. And that's, actions were attached, and I, it, I'm not sure that a $15 subsidy on a cab ride versus an $8.50 subsidy on the express boat, or $15 subsidy on a $17 ride versus an $8.50 subsidy on a $36 ride. I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't play in my particular mind. Of course, that's me.
Well, is there, Cindy coming?
Well, I mean, I think there's a whole bunch more data that I'd like to look at, and I'm certainly available and would like to go through your numbers more extensively with you. I don't believe, you know, eight months before, in the, eight months before the end of a contract, that it's the right time to renegotiate. I mean, we're, you know, as I understand it, if we were not to accept the recommended actions, then basically our subsidy is at capacity at this point, and we have no public transportation until we negotiate a new contract. So I think we're eight months away from being able to go into a new contract or an extension of the existing one, and I'd like to take that opportunity between now and then to review the numbers more in detail and have a way better understanding than I do of this now.
Other counsel comments?
So the main thing is we need to concentrate on extending the contract, is that what we need to do? Keep it going and then review it after that?
Right, so what's come to our attention is that the auditors have made it clear that they are not comfortable with us providing a subsidy with an expired contract.
This is a contract from 18 months ago?
Right, I understand.
And then it expires next June 30th?
Right.
And I agree, we need a contract, I'm just not sure what the appropriate number for filing months is. But I think if we would have, in a timely manner, done what we talked about doing in 2012, we would have had this discussion earlier.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to make a, there you go. I'm going to make a recommendation that we authorize the extension of the Catalina Transportation Services Agreement to provide the public transportation services through June 30th, 2015.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
At what rate?
What's in here? At the rate that they're currently, the existing rate. Other comments?
And we negotiate it at a later time?
Yes, for next year.
For next year.
Okay, is that something that we set up before the contract comes to pass?
It better be.
We did two years ago.
We're going to move a little bit quicker this time.
Find ourselves in this predicament again, yeah.
Right, correct.
Yeah, we find, I'm sure it'd be better for Catalina Transportation Services as well, knowing what they need to do to move forward in the future.
All righty, let's call for the vote.
Three ayes, Councilmember Sampson, Cassidy Hernandez, two nos, Mayor Marshall, and Councilmember Olson.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12 is an ordinance modifying the municipal code to eliminate special licenses required for certain professions. I don't exactly recall how this came to be.
I get to have my tattoo parlor.
Oh, that's right. You were going to put in a tattoo parlor, and that's when we stumbled upon this. It's come to our attention that we inappropriately require licenses of things like people that are psychics and people that are offering clairvoyant services. And there's, there's a list of professions that we were requiring special licenses according to the municipal code. City Attorney did a review, determined that this was not legal, and recommended that we strike these requirements from the code. So that is what this item seeks to do, to bring us into compliance with the law. Scott, if there's anything additional on this, please feel free to chime in.
No, all these, we have special requirements for basically First Amendment activities, and so we're eliminating that. We still are retaining them though for, you know, large events, carnival, circuses, public exhibitions, that kind of, because there's a special impact that those may have on city services, given the size and the need for staffing and the need for police services. But store shop, fortune tellers, et cetera. They're just going to get a business license like everyone else.
Right, but before, they had to indemnify the city, get fingerprinted, have background checks and all of that. So all that's been wiped out.
Correct.
Okay, public comment?
Locking the podium.
So, comment or motion?
I'll move that the City Council introduce in a way of all readings of an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Avalon, modifying Avalon Municipal Code 3-1.122, business professions, trades, and occupations requiring a special license.
I'll second that. Other comment? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, item number 13 on the agenda, the last item under general business, is the proposed adoption of Phase 2 of the City Council goals. These were discussed back on August 18th. I had the good judgment, as you may recall, to not be present for this discussion. I'm kidding, folks, kidding, kidding. I have reviewed the goals, and if I could just quickly run through them, just so the public is aware of what these are. And these are in addition to the prior batch of goals that you adopted, I believe initially back in April or May. So here they are. Number one, restore amphitheater above city park. Number two, cease and desist order, continue working with the State Water Resources Board to eliminate the mandate. Number three, community center, work towards a recreational center, allow for additional use of Joe Machado Field, and strive towards a community garden. Number four, pursue grant money for artificial turf on Joe Machado Field. Number five, a recreational goal, allowing for more senior activities, arts and crafts, and a sound studio, conducting a recreational assessment. Number six, Cambrio Mall, come up with a comprehensive plan for the repair and the build, including grant money. Number seven, organizational and staff development, strive towards accountability, provide training, both physical and mental, and a wellness program. Number eight, subsidy program provides...
You missed D and E.
I'm sorry?
You missed D and E.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Define what training goals are, and earmark money, and then an IT component, allowing for social media. Number eight, subsidy program, propose revisions mainly for establishing residency and the verification along with vehicles, work with Catalina Express on this. Number nine, work with other stakeholders and the community. Number 10, contemplate creating a 2030 or 2040 vision, considering that there was a 2020 vision. And number 11, update planning ordinances. What I would tell you, my recommendation here, it's my desire to have every goal be what is referred to as SMART, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-specific. And at a bare minimum, I would say that none of these goals have anything time-specific stated about them. I would like to have time-specific components. Why are you giving me that look?
Well, the cease and desist order does?
What's the, what's the time-specific?
Isn't that the April 2016?
Nothing in here says anything about that. I think that, you know, at a minimum, these goals need to be made time-specific. And I would also suggest that some of them are not measurable. I think these are all relevant. But I think that, you know, looking at these with fresh eyes this morning, two, two things that I would suggest. Either, number one, you direct me to take these back and put in some additional components that would make them SMART goals, and they would just be recommendations coming from me for you to consider. Or, number two, you tune them up right now and provide those components. Or, number three, you disregard what I'm saying and you adopt them as is.
Okay, let me ask a question. When we first started with this, didn't you, we say we're going to put all goals on, that have a two-year lifespan? There was something about a two-year span on these. So, so if you go to the two-year plan, to the two years starting it and/or completing it, I don't know if it was to be completed in two years, but at least started within the two years, do you want other kind of dates like that? So maybe...
Well, I mean, okay, so, so for example, let's take...
Phase two as well. It's not phase one, I mean...
That's true. I would say, let's look at number one. Restore amphitheater above city park. So we're aware of a $250,000 pledge to help us with that effort. I would think that I would want to put some additional detail within there, and I, where I would say maybe, you know, take the $250,000, secure it within, you know, the fiscal 14, 15 year, create a phase one plan with that pledge, and approach the island company with this concept, get approval, and, and implement, and include some type of component to allow for the maintenance of that property. Just, I would want some specifics added in there so that we're, we're very clear as to what we're marching towards. When you have goals that are, that are not well-defined, they're, they're open to interpretation. And I would just really want to add some, some detail so that I, I completely understand what we are doing.
However, we didn't add the detail to the other ones either.
No, well, I think the phase one goals, I believe, and I, you know, they've got some more meat on them. This is one, one person's opinion.
Okay, okay.
But like for four, we could say by 12:31, 16?
Yes.
Right, right.
And that's a SMART, that would be a SMART goal then?
Yes.
Well, if you want to work with staff to put goals on this and come back with us...
Yeah, I'd be willing to add some proposals to meet these up a bit, if you will, and then give them back to you to say, here's some things I think allow, that will make it so that we can obtain these goals.
Do we want to suggest some specifics about these as a council? Like this artificial turf at Joe Machado Field, I've been approached by several constituents about how it's, it could be cancer-causing. I'd like some research done on that, and that's specific that maybe staff could look into, things like that. This, number one, to restore the amphitheater, there's, if there's cash for that, I mean, we could, we could use the cash to go forward with that program. But I don't think it's one of the main ones in here. The cease and desist, the Cambrio Mall, I mean, these are liabilities for the city that could be detrimental to our functioning. Those are two that are really important, if you ask me. I, I think everything else falls second, falls short of those.
I think a lot of these goals fall within different departments in the city as well. So you've got recreation goal, you have grants goals, you have planning goals, and those are different, very distinct areas of City Hall that can be working on those simultaneously. My only concern is the amount of time and effort staff is putting into this. I almost want to recommend that perhaps we join up as, however we can do it as council members and help with that process, because as, from what I see, I mean, your guys' plates in general are pretty full, so adding this to it is...
I don't see as a significant staff effort, really. I mean, I think that, you know, I just, I just want some additional detail. But we're always wanting to get your input, of course.
What do you, what do you think, time-wise?
I think that, you know, this is, this could be assigned to an individual who could come up with some proposals probably in an afternoon, and I could review them, and we could, you know, come back with a modified. I mean, I think total, start to finish, this might be eight hours of effort, including writing a revised staff report and putting it on the agenda.
Okay.
When you, when you talk about community center in your little discussions, the preschool was set up with a second, being able to maintain a second story, from what I understand. And I'm just saying, remember that that's there.
Okay.
Because, you know, if we do needs assessment and find out what we need, we don't know what we're going to need, but that is, that was the intention of that at some point, to be put into a second story.
Chris, then we have the issue, what's a community center? Chris, then we have the issue, what's a community center?
That's why, that's why the needs assessment and the activities needs to be assessed better. See what we need. Okay, so you got direction, or you gave us your direction?
Well, mine's a suggestion. I don't give you guys direction.
Well, I know, but I think that sounds fine.
If you guys are okay with that. So what we do is, again, just to reiterate, we'll put some additional detail in here. We'll provide that to you in a revised staff report at the next meeting, and you can review and consider these goals with additional meat on them.
Right. And you'll review those other ones to make sure the meat's on those two things?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Now I believe we're going into closed session?
Yeah, we have one closed session. This is consideration of initiation of litigation. This is consideration of a potential action against the County of Los Angeles for funds. I anticipate that this will take less than five minutes.
Yeah. Put the clock out.
I'm putting a clock.
And we're back? Scott?
In closed session, we beat the timer. Closed session, the council unanimously accepted settlement offer from the County of Los Angeles to receive approximately $13,500 for property tax reimbursement.
Okay. That being the last item, meeting's adjourned.